I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a minute. This week, the past two weeks, has not been a very pleasant time in the village of Rouse's Point. We buried one of our past employees last week, and this morning a great civic leader passed away, a firefighter in the EMT. Former Mayor Leo Luttrell, so I would please ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. By the way, the employee was Joe Markle. Comments from the public at this time? There'll be no comments at this time. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of previous meeting, regular meeting on November 3rd, and special meeting on November 7th. And we all have copies. Is there any additions or additions to the minutes? Get that in our agenda motion? Good. Motion by John Hoprow.
I'll second him.
Seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There'll be no discussion. All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills? Everybody has a copy of the bills.
The Luck Brothers' bills, there's like five of them, over $600,000. In my understanding, there are questions on some of these bills, so I don't know if the board wants to approve any of this or none of it. Hold it until the next meeting, they'll want to do it.
We have 30 days to pay that bill, that's for sure. It's a board's pleasure.
$607,000.
That doesn't surprise me.
No, it doesn't surprise me either. I don't know what the problem is, Dean. Something can be discussed, or not?
Yes, well, for one thing, I can't get anybody to sign the bills. They had questions, I believe. I'd like to have a walk-through, something with them to find out. I'd like to have a walk-through, find out if everybody does the code here before you pay the bills, which I guess hasn't been done.
You have an chance to get that done here? Or who's doing that?
Basically, I believe the situation is, and there's a number of bills about Maple Street.
Okay.
And Brian hasn't had a chance to walk the street with me as yet. I'm kind of hopeful he can do that this meeting sometime.
You're talking just a whole thing after the ones that go to bills then? I think most of them approved those would be exceptional for the board's meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hoprow, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There'll be no discussion. All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have a few items, a couple that were added on today. First one we have is a letter from Time Warner Cable, dated October 30th, from the mayor and Mr. Renee, our attorney. It has to do with cable television franchise renewal between Time Warner and Village of Rouse's Point. Dear Sir, the purpose of this letter is to extend an invitation to continue our discussion regarding cable television franchise renewal. I have been tasked with going forward with franchise negotiations, and would like to take this opportunity to introduce myself, perhaps arrange a meeting or teleconference. As my understanding, only a couple of issues remain open, and I would like to try and move this forward. As always, we look forward to working with you and continuing the strong relationship Time Warner Cable has with your office in Village of Rouse's Point. Signed, sincerely, Richard Strong, Manager of Government Affairs, Time Warner Cable, Syracuse Division. We also have a letter that was received in today from Time Warner. It says, Dear Time Warner Cable Franchise Official, I wanted to give you advance notification of the annual rate notice our customers will receive later this month. We will implement a rate increase for some service offerings effective January 1st, 2004. Over the past year, we've enhanced our services to provide our customers with the highest quality choices and value of cable. We have just completed a major upgrading of our North Country system, making possible new channels and offerings. It's quite a lengthy thing, and they've attached a copy of the new rates, which they're going to be mailing to the customers.
Any comments? I got some comments.
Rates are going up again, right?
Yeah.
They're taking away some channels, too.
They're taking away one good one, but they're adding some good ones.
What are they taking away?
But that is new, the issue is.
Which one is gone?
Uh, W D.
We are, if it's gone.
Gone, yeah. Channel 11, yeah.
And they gave us channel 10, North Country News. When's the last time you've seen anything on a North Country on that thing? And you never will.
Well, that's on a water toast circuit.
Yeah. So it's another one I put in the [inaudible]. Anyway, that's it.
We also have a letter from Montgomery, hose, hook, and ladder, dated November 1. It's addressed to your mayor and village trustees. This letter is to formally request the village board to purchase the first vacant lot behind the fire station. We strongly believe that without the village purchasing this lot, it will have a very negative impact on the possible growth of our department. Parking capacity behind the station is very limited, and if someone else purchases this property and puts up a barricade, there will not be adequate parking for department members. The purchase of this lot could also be utilized during training sessions such as the law stream. Currently, we use the area directly behind the station, which is too small for this activity. We will be more than happy to discuss this further with the board if necessary. Also, as a safety concern, please be advised that there have been occasions where people parking on the east side of the laundromat have been a hindrance to members responding to fire and EMS calls. Customers back out in front of responding members, and some even park sideways on this private driveway. Prior to this building being a laundromat, parking on the east side of the building was not allowed, as there were rail ties blocking this area. The rail ties have been removed, and laundromat customers are using the private drive to get access to the east side of the laundromat. This private drive is put in place as an easy access to members coming from the south end of the village. We are requesting that the village contact the owners of the laundromat in request that customers not use this private drive in the future. Thank you for your continued cooperation and report hearing from you regarding these two requests. Respectfully submit us to Justice Roberts, Secretary.
How much do we want? We have no idea. Wait, Eddie, that'd be a nation of the park.
Sure would, but don't leave it there.
It's hard to donate.
We've got information, we can act on it. You don't know anything further, do you, Calvin?
I'm sorry?
Know anything further at this point?
About?
That lot?
No, I do not, no.
At least $1,000.
The other thing I have is a memo that was sent to me by Bob Craig, our police chief. The subject is Toys for Tots Drive. He asked if I could read this at the meeting tonight. The Rouse's Point Police Department is again this year participating in the annual Toys for Tots Drive along with the United States Marine Corps and the Canadian Pacific Railway. The toy drop is located at the village office. Donations must be dropped off, dropped off, honor before Friday, December 12th. Many and all donations will be greatly appreciated. Is there anything you want me to do with that fire department letter?
I think the only thing you can do is say that we received it at this time, and we take it under consideration, if all we can do.
I think the parking area may need to be, they may need to stop the mic about that. Okay, John?
And that's all I have.
Thank you. No. Reports, so mayor and trustees. The only thing I have on the agenda tonight, and as I said, I'm requesting an executive session for litigation. Can you put that formal motion?
Got it.
Seconded by Trustee Hoprow. Roll call vote, Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will say aye. And that's it for me. Now, the second thing under Trustee Bernard, all I have, one thing to do. It's a press release. Village of Rouse's Point, village office, the village office wishes to remind all drivers that the parking ban for all vehicles on village streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. will be effective December 1, 2003, to March 31, 2004. This prohibited is necessary to permit efficient plowing of the streets and prevent damage to any private vehicle during plow and sanding operation. This ban must be enforced if necessary. This ban must be enforced if necessary. Cars will be towed at their owner's expense. In a related manner, residents are asked to make sure that parked cars and driveways do not block sidewalks. Individuals who plow driveways and so forth are also reminded not to push the snow to block the sidewalks and the throughbys. If this occurs, individual plow operators will be charged for the labor equipment needed to remove the snow. Signed, Police Chief Robert Frank. That's it for me. Trustee Hoprow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is discussion. I don't know much discussion we need to do on it at this point, John, but let me make a motion, and then we'll move to discussion. I would like to move that we proceed with the purchase of up to 600 feet of 36-inch pipe from Serpentine piping at the water tower. To be installed by the village crew next summer if possible. This will take care of our need to provide adequate chlorine contact time should and when the water tank has to be shut down. For instance, in a few years, it's going to have to be shut down to be clean, and we won't have to worry about issuing a boil water order or any such thing, as long as we have that storage facility. One of the advantages of this, of course, is that it's underground, it's plastic piping, and it doesn't have to be serviced. Right? Chief?
They're telling us.
That's what they're telling us. John, update, any further on this?
Basically, we're still waiting for final health department approval. Contacted the fellow a couple times in the last couple of weeks. He's kind of buried, but we promised to give him our project here within a week or so. I will call him again tomorrow and make sure that he still knows Rouse's Point isn't undermined.
I need a second to that motion.
I was going to ask you, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's a long motion. Take all the ifs ands or buts.
I already took care of it.
Fix it up.
Is it possible that we're going to be told that this is not absolutely necessary right away? Is that a possibility?
It is not absolutely necessary right away, not immediately.
Right.
But the cost of this pipe is just going to keep going up and up and up and up.
I understand that, but let's, I know in part of your motion, John, you said that we would install it next summer if possible. If it's not possible, is there any problem with housing this pipe or storing it for any length of time?
No.
Is it right?
It depends. Some of the pipe is, the sunlight will affect it.
Well, we should put it inside. Then put.
Cover it.
Cover it.
Yeah, we'd have to cover it.
There's really, as you said today, there's no reason that it can't be done next summer.
No. If we're trying to plan out the project for next year, that is one major project for the street department.
Put it to storage. You have that. No? Just cover it.
Just cover it.
What is that? That's the BDC, 600 or whatever it is? Uh, short. Schedule 80? Schedule 80 plastic pipe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's only actually, but the heavier the schedule 80, George. Schedule 80 they don't make, and that's size.
So how large a storage area do you figure that we need to store this amount of pipe?
Just covering it with tarps would be sufficient. You wouldn't really need a storage area.
You can put it outside.
Leaving it outside, regardless of the weather, it's okay?
Right. The sunlight would be the only issue, and actually, for a summer, it really wouldn't be a problem, but for a precaution, covering it with tarps would be sufficient.
I just don't want to, I don't want to be in the position of having purchased the pipe if we're unable to install it next summer, for whatever reason, and have a storage problem for it. And I understand the cost is going up, and I don't have a problem with that, but purchasing it now, and, you know, we pretty much have to guarantee that we're going to be able to install it next summer. It's the way that I see it, maybe that's incorrect, but if we can, I just want to make sure that we have a place where we can store it safely and properly, so it will still be usable when the time comes that we can.
Biggest area, about 100 by 25, 100 feet by 25.
I don't see any problem keeping it outdoors.
They're already discovered.
My god, they had Luck had piped in here in early spring, and we didn't use it till late fall, and it stored right outdoors. Same stuff.
Now, it's probably the best place to store it, which cleans up the area up at the water tank. It's stored close to Academy Street, so that when they go to work in the back of the lot, they'll just take it from the front and move it to the back into the excavation and place it and do all the fittings. So that'd be, I would think, the best place to store it.
I agree.
So, John, is there any timeline when we will hear a response back in terms of the project and this idea of putting this piping in?
Basically, we have the local health department endorsement. We're waiting on Albany.
Right.
And they said previously, contact and answer at a time, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Is there any possibility they're going to come back and tell us that we're not able to do this?
I suppose there's always a possibility, but it's relatively very small. There's not, you know, see where they check.
Tell me, would you be comfortable with waiting until next meeting? Small couples?
I would be comfortable, I think, waiting to make sure that it's something that we do, in fact, have to do, until we get our response from them. I would prefer to wait, but, you know, that's just my own opinion.
I don't want to spend the money, but we'll have to, we probably are going to have to spend it.
We're going to have to spend it, it's a matter of how we spend it.
Well, but the one letter we did get from the county health department here was that we would maintain the proper contact time without it. That was the one letter.
As long as the egg doesn't go down.
Well, but even so, I mean, it was something that we didn't necessarily have to do right away, and I understand the cost factor completely, but I just prefer, I would prefer to wait until it's something that we know we absolutely, within the scope of this project, have to do.
Let's table it until next meeting, John. Is that, okay, what do you have to add?
I got a question. John?
Yes.
Where do we stand to get in the money from the groundwater bond?
Basically, it's off the tangent of time, the final from the local health department, which hopefully will be forthcoming very shortly.
The object of this is to get that purchased under that bond act.
Yes, that's what I'm going to do.
And if we get final approval before we purchase it, we ain't going to, then we don't start paying for it. Village, we're not going to get any extra money out of them.
Final approval, that I'm talking about is the final plan, the financing approval is held up pending the final plan.
Do you figure in two weeks we should have approval?
I hope.
Can you shake anybody up down there again?
I've tried.
I know you have.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we'll table, then, how do we deal about that, right?
I think it's better to withdraw for now.
Withdraw, withdraw. It's on second?
Yeah, it's second, yeah. No problem.
Smart move. Okay. Press release, creative toys and holiday train. Actually, press release has to do with the annual Christmas creative toys delivered Friday, December 5th, at 6:45 p.m. at Rouse Park, not at the gazebo. At Rouse Park at 6:45, the annual creative toys sponsored by the village of Rouse's Point is scheduled for Friday, December 5th, 2003. Everyone is invited to meet at Rouse Park at 6:45 p.m. We will parade to the Pecos Crow Memorial Gazebo near the village offices, where carols will be sung and tree will be led. Center will give the children candy canes, and there'll be treated hot chocolate and cookies, plus their chaplains and that. And everybody is encouraged to bring their favorite stuffed animal and join the parade. That doesn't mean just village of Rouse's Point residents, that's anybody. And later that evening, I don't think we have the exact time for this point, but certainly after 10 o'clock, the CP holiday train will be stopping at Rouse's Point on its journey northward. Many people were able to get there last year, I was not, but everybody said it was a point of delight to see that parade come up through. We'll let you know the appropriate time at the next meeting.
Along with that, everybody that comes up has requested to bring a canned good to the food bank, either canned good or dry package. It was very, very successful last year. We hope it's going to even be better this year. Food bank did well last year.
I would like to request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel.
I'll second that. Motion by Trustee Hoprow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson for executive session. Roll call vote, Trustee Hoprow, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will say aye.
Two more quick things. Tomorrow and Wednesday, the flags of the village of Rouse's Point will be flown at past staff in memory of former mayor Luttrell. And I would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving holiday. It's all this, man.
Thank you, Trustee Hoprow. Trustee Penfield.
We have nothing on the agenda tonight. My only comment would be, I don't know if anyone has had an opportunity to look at the library, but it seems like the job that they did on the outside of the library has done very, very well. It looks much better.
Brighter looking.
I think it was, yeah, money definitely well spent, so.
That's good.
That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
John, do you have anything to report tonight on Sauer or anything?
Basically, we haven't done anything at that in the last couple of weeks. We've been pretty well tied up on Maple Street. We're still pretty well hung up with the BDC and land acquisition issue over, you know, pretty much. Hopefully, that will be resolved by the end of the year.
Rob Cranny died too, so. I might put his behind on that.
Rob.
Ed Norton. Oh, Ed Norton, sorry. Ed Norton. Oh, sorry. Okay, I just have a couple things to talk about tonight.
Rob, no.
All right. Kelly and I attended the monthly fire meeting last Monday to discuss the fire department and EMS district agreement to take effect on 1-1 of 2004. We're still working on that. I almost forgot to mention our friends at Hometown Cable. I have their yearly donation, and I just want to thank Calvin and everybody for the good things that they do for our communities. I wish to offer condolences to Leo Luttrell's family. He was a real special person here in the village, and he gave a lot more than he took over the last eight, three years. And his funeral is on Wednesday also. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Phil?
I have nothing, sir.
All right, Zach?
Excuse me, we received the final notice today, the final billing on the fire pumper, the replacement pumper. Passed out a copy of it to the board members, something corporation. Balance due on that is $202,486.11. If you recall, quite some time ago, we already made a payment of $150,000 on that. I think that's back in December. So I need permission from the board to go out and borrow $202,500. My understanding is, is that the payment terms are upon delivery of the apparatus, so.
That kind of.
You have next one, so. Back up that check. It's one of that $3,500.
And that's $4,628.12, less the dip price, lower, because we got the interest off that on 50, so we're just. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize our sense to go out and go borrow the $203,500 from the department.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There'll be no discussion. All those in favor, your side of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Vote.
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
The mayor will say aye. That's all I have. Brian?
Nothing.
John?
Just going to try and finish up things before winter here. We have a couple of headaches down at the water plant, a couple of valves out in the street will close. Hoping to resolve those headaches by middle of the week here with Brian and Gary. They're pretty good to plan the pack. Their thing that we'll be concentrating on this week is to lock down Maple Street, get anything addressed that needs to be addressed prior to winter. Sit down with Brian, go through all the requests for payments, make sure he's happy with what to.
John, is there any possibility of having that yard cleaned up by the fifth? I'm not necessarily saying tarred, but at least cleaned up, because that area, we're planning on using the village garage instead of the heating building for the creative toys, but if we had that area cleaned up, it would really be very, very helpful.
We'll make an track of where, and hopefully we can resolve the.
We'll resolve the valve problem if the building came up.
Well, we got one other problem there, the floor drain out of the police station garage. Needs to be addressed. We'll make every effort to make sure that it's reasonably well cleaned up.
Eric?
The only thing I wanted to add is that water tank, the slab has been complete inside the tank now that the bacteriological and VOC tests are complete. With the one connection to the plant, the industrial filters are now being, having water sent out to the transmission line and out to the village, out through the transmission line. So we're, are utilizing some of our project. We're monitoring the chlorine residual at that new location and working with Wyatt, keeping them abreast of any changes that we're doing, because obviously, the changes we make with the water system affects them. They received their materials for starting the interior work at the water tank, the partitioning walls. I think John covered everything else, unless you have any questions.
I just have one question, unless anyone else does. It's about Maple Street.
Yes.
I don't know whether we know at this point, or we might know by the December 1st meeting. I think some of the residents may have questions in terms of what, how the street will be left before winter. In other words, people who do snow removal, people who do upkeep of their sidewalks in front of their houses, whatever, what can they expect when the inclement weather arrives? In other words, driveway aprons will or will not be finished?
Driveway aprons do not come in the pavement buildings.
So can they, I guess my question then would be, when Luck Brothers signs off for the year, who does the upkeep then of the side of the road during the snowy weather season?
The village.
So we do. So if someone needs fill between their driveway and the pavement, which in many cases is very much higher than the level of someone's driveway, they should call the village.
I would hope that we can address any of those issues the next week to 10 days.
That was why I was wondering, if maybe next meeting might be the time to answer that question, but I know people who get out and snow blow the driveways are going to have those kinds of questions, and I just wondered if we could give them an idea of how the road will be left for the winter.
Basically, we'll try to do as smooth as possible.
Okay.
Luck Brothers did, commend them, dumped it, passed the far side of the driveway aprons between the sidewalk and the homeowners, which they really wasn't expecting them to get them, but they made concerted effort to get that done with the homeowners.
Right.
Snows, so we're moving this around. Then on the driveway, between the sidewalk and the road, they really gave me constructed top layer rat ball, so.
Right.
Try to get it as smooth as possible.
And then the places in front of some of the homes where there's, there's quite a, you know, a pile of, I don't know what it is, stone, I don't know what it is.
Well, the end of last week and this week, they're continuing, they're cleaning up all of that shoulder area, smoothing it all out, taking up the debris, and they're going along, putting down a proper gravel shoulder.
Okay.
But you'll see a good share of it, like right straight in front of the school, they've cleaned up all through there, so it'll be very similar to that for the whole length of the street. They've been going up the east side and then coming back down on the west side.
Right, because I just think some of the residents are going to be concerned not to disturb something that they shouldn't be disturbing in the process of snow removal and keeping up their property for the winter, that's all. So I think that even if by next meeting, we could let them know if that's it, or if there's something else that will be done, that would be a really good thing to do.
Right.
So, okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
John, you have something you want to say?
Nope, Eric took care of it. I didn't have my agenda to call on you, but you took care of the issue anyway.
Open the public com...
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric. I forgot to mention when I was talking about the fire pumper. The $150,000 state loan that we got last year was a 20-year payback. Am I going to ask for 20 years on this issue, too? I assume I will, but I got to check with you guys first.
I would think so, but if by chance we can pay it off sooner, will that be possible?
I could ask for a call of the bond, which usually is more money, interest rates.
Well, do the best you can for 20 years, I guess.
Why don't you get the quotes on both of them? Call will bond in a regular one, and that way I can decide, because, I mean, I'd like to pay it off earlier than 20 years would be good.
We have done that in the past, haven't we? Paid off bonds?
I believe stipulated, though, I think.
We haven't paid off any long-term bonds, to my knowledge, before...
Dead off vans, right?
Vans, yeah.
Not the ambulance, the rescue truck would pay it off, like, in two or three years.
Yeah, they're probably vans.
What do we want to do? What do we, get a quote for both of them?
Get a quote for both, and that way we can get... Well, when you say both of them, dump a cow, go, mount cow, go? But it's still the same...
20 years, 20 years, yeah. Open the meeting up to public this time, anybody wishing to...
One more thing, George. With some of the inclement weather that we had, the shutdown, Luck utilized the opportunity to do our fall inspection on the intake, swam the whole line, and the line looks good, the containment line for the zebra muscle control is settling down into the sediment. There's no new zebra muscle juveniles, but there's still a significant adult cluster at the intake, so when we start up the chlorination with this project through the winter, we'll be set up, so that we'll be chlorinating at the intake to alleviate the zebra muscle issue. In the spring, we'll pop those screens off and clean them out, so we'll start out with a good baseline. Other than that, everything looked good elsewhere, so just wanted to give you an update on that.
So when do you plan on starting that, Eric?
This year, we'll have all the pumping, part of this project, all the pumps set up so that it will be delivered to the piping that was previously installed, and then once the lake temperature gets above 53 in the summer, in the spring, that's when your zebra muscle population starts going again.
Right.
So at that point is when we'll start chlorinating at the intake.
Good, thank you, Eric. Open the meeting to public this time, anybody wishing to address the board? What, Eddie?
I've got one question on Maple Street, the sidewalk. On the east side, is a lot lower than the road?
We know that, that's one of the issues.
Oh, okay. Apparently, it's not going to stay like that, or?
I have no idea, I can't answer that. I know that's, that's in one section was quite low.
Okay.
Well, that's, close the meeting at this time, I have a motion of recess.
Good.
Motion by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close the polls. 7:25.
The third one, he's pretty good.
On 30. Call the stadium doors.